All right, good evening or good afternoon, beautiful people. Quick, quick introduction. My name is Herman Cerda. I'm the new superintendent of Alum Rock Union School District. I'm now in my fifth week. And welcome to tonight's Alum Rock School Consolidation Town Hall meeting. I do want to, yes, let you all know that this is being recorded, so you are being recorded. And so you'll be able to see this later or share it, or also, we're also going to share the link so that you can guide other people to where to get the information. So, thank you very much. There is translation in English, I mean, in Spanish and Vietnamese. So make sure you click on the correct link to enter that Zoom room. So you get the information in English or Vietnamese. So real quick introduction. I wanted to, I'm going to share a PowerPoint presentation with you. And then I'm going to go over with you just to update you. Can everybody see my screen okay? Thumbs up?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to share a presentation with you. Let me see if I could. And I'm also going to share some information and update on where we're at with the school consolidation and closure. So that you have this information. Because there is a committee that has been meeting on a regular basis and they will be making a recommendation. Actually tomorrow on October the 30th to me. Indicating which of the schools they will be recommending for closure and consolidation. So. With that, what I do want to do here is introduce my team. Teresa, Teresa De Sales is the Assistant Superintendent of Business. She's also going to join us. And help in answering any questions that pertain to the budget or the maintenance and operations, transportation. We also have Sandra Garcia, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. She can also, she's also going to jump in and answer any questions pertaining to the instructional programs. Programs during summer after school. We have Cesar Torrico, who's the Assistant Superintendent of HR. He's the person that will be also helping us with, you know, notifying staff that will not be returning due to the budget cuts. And deals with with more of the human resources side of the house. We also have Mark Freitas. Raise your hand, Mark. There you are. He's the interim chief of bonds and we're going to be working closely with 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 Mark. In utilizing our bond funds to support the schools that will continue to remain open. And we're going to improve those facilities and we'll share a little bit more with you. I also have Brett Littrow. Brett, raise your hand. He's the Chief Technology Officer. I forgot the R, sorry Brett. But he's the Chief Technology Officer. He pretty much deals with handles all the infrastructure, technology, infrastructure here in the district. We have a newly appointed Chief of Communications and Community Engagement, Sergio Diaz Luna. I don't know if he's here today. But his official first date will be on November the 11th or 12th. And so he will be working with us in ensuring that we are communicating and providing the community, especially you, the parents, the teachers, staff. Around keeping you updated around where we're at with the school closures and consolidation as well as information that you will need. If your school, if the school in your community will be closed, he will be sending out communication and regular updates. Regarding the process and updating you as much as possible in the progress and process that we're following. And so this is a position that I felt was was needed, that this district needs. We have not had a communications person here for quite some time. We've, previous administration has been contracting out and so we're looking forward to having Sergio on board. I also want to thank Carlos Tripoli, Carmelina Bautista, raise your hand Carmelina. And also Andrea Omori. There are translator technicians and they're always here supporting our families. So thank you very much. And so, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and get started with the presentation. And so as you've heard, the interim superintendent before I was hired, Manny Barbera updated the Board of Education, the Board of Trustees here regarding our budget deficit. As you can see, because of the decline in enrollment, also low birth rates, we have been declining in enrollment. And now we are in a deep hole. It's a fiscal crisis where we have to address a $20 million deficit. Teresa De Sales, the way she puts it, I think this makes a lot more sense is that really what we have to do is we have to save at least $10 million every year in order for us to 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 become fiscally solvent. The state and the county office, Senate County Office of Education requires that we show in our budgets that we have three years, okay, that we have three years and we are solvent for three years. And per state law, education code, we're supposed to have a 3% reserve. Right now, the district is in a fiscal crisis. We are only showing two years. That we have enough funds to to sustain this district for two years. The third year, we are bankrupt. We do not have the funds. And so now we are in a, we cannot continue functioning with the 22, 23 schools that we have in this district. We have to close and consolidate schools in order to become solvent in the third year. Closing up to nine schools will give us the 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 savings that we need, almost up to $10 million to become solvent in our third year. What this means is that if we do close the up to nine schools, which is what our Board of Trustees has approved. The operations and the cost would save us the 10 million this year, but we still need to come up with another $10 million in savings for the fourth year, which once this year is over, we still have to show three years again. That we have three years to continue to become solvent. And the Board of Trustees also recommended that a committee be developed, created that is representative of all our educational stakeholders, parents, teachers, community members, administrators and district staff. It's a committee of about 30 educational partners that are representing all of the schools. And they have been meeting and they've already met for seven scheduled meetings and they have been discussing the criteria that they will need to identify which of the schools they will be recommending to me, the superintendent. That then I will review, which will be tomorrow is the last meeting. They've already identified closest six schools. And hopefully tomorrow they will identify the up to nine schools that they will be recommending to me for closure. I will look at their recommendations and I may change it, I may not, depending on the the plan that they submit. So far, I've been sitting in on the meetings with them. And I've been very impressed with the committee members whom have been very unselfish. They're not saying save my school, save my school. They're looking at everything. They're looking at, and I'll go over some of the criteria that they're recommending. But the committee has been very impartial. They're keeping it to facts. You know, is it going to cost more money to keep a school open? Is there a drop in enrollment? If there's a drop in enrollment at that particular school, why should we continue to keep it open, right? If it's, if it's continuing to decline enrollment. So those are just some examples. So, so this committee, you know, once they they do make the recommendation for the 24, 25 school year, we are going to be leaner. We're going to be, we're going to have less schools. But also, we're going to be able to consolidate and maximize our resources. Right now, one of the things that we're noticing is that we are spreading ourselves too thin across the 22 sites. And there are classes, we are actually overstuffed in teaching positions and other positions throughout the district. And so when you have classes with 16 to 17, 18 students, you're not maximizing the actual full-time or FTE, as they call it, full-time employment or the positions that that you are, you're actually not using the number of sections or positions as well as you should. And when you do combine schools, you'll have more classes and sections, grade levels, where you'll be able to combine those classes so that we can get to the actual class size, number of students that are called out in the collective bargaining agreement from from our teachers' union. So that's one thing we we are definitely looking forward to. And this is some of the criteria. I'm not going to go over all the criteria with you. But this is some of the criteria that the committee came up with. One of the things that they're looking at is if there is an elementary that's under 300 students in enrollment, or if it's a middle school with less than 400 students in enrollment, then those students, those schools would be considered for closing. But all the schools, they've looked at every single school. They're also looking at schools that are not within close proximity of a charter school. If we end up closing a school that has a charter school right next to them, then that means we would lose some of those students. And I just want to give you a little bit more context around the type of district that we are and how we are funded. We are an ADA district. We are funded. It's the average daily attendance. We are funded by the state gives us an apportionment per student of approximately $15,000 per student. So if you lose 100 students, then then that's, you know, 1.5 million dollars that we end up losing. So. When earlier I talked about how our enrollment has declined, every time we lose a student that equates to $15,000 that we lose that is no longer in our budget. So. It's very important that we we continue to to attract students, families to our schools. And so in the future, one of the things that we are going to do is we do have $150 million in bond money. And what we're going to do is we are going to, and Mark Freitas can answer some questions if you have any pertaining to that. But what we're going to do with those bond monies is we are going to dedicate those funds to improving our facilities so that we are fixing them, they are operational. And they also have that curve of appeal. I've walked all the sites and and some of the sites are, they they need work. They 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 need work. Our lawns are drying up. I mean, it's just, it breaks my heart to visit some of these sites. But anyhow, back to the criteria, some of the other criteria that we're looking at is, you know, the school's operational capacity. There are schools that can actually hold up to 1,000 students, but only have about 250, 200, you know, 300 students. And so we want to make sure we can combine a school where more students are going to fit. We're also looking at the ability for parents to to transport their students, right? We don't want to close too many schools where parents, families or students are going to have to walk more than a mile. And so we're, we're looking at that. The committee's looking at all that that criteria. Also that there are no special ed programs that can't be moved. We want to make sure that we maintain those programs. Also, we are looking at at specialized programs. We don't want to move or close a school that's offering a solid program that's actually attracting students. And right now we have the the dual language programs are Vietnamese and also our dual language in Spanish. Programs that are actually attracting students from other districts. They are so successful that I want to share this with you that over 500 students are actually enrolling in our district because of specialized programs from other districts, from Berriessa, Franklin McKinney, McKinley, from from what other districts? Berriessa, Franklin McKinney, Evergreen.
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant, that's the other one that I keep on forgetting. Thank you, Sandra. And so those are some of the programs that are attracting students and they're actually generating millions of dollars for our district. So we want to continue and ensure and continue to offer those programs. And these are some important dates. These are the dates of when the committee has met and what they were looking at in order to finalize their decision. Like I mentioned, tomorrow is the October the 30th will be their final meeting for the committee. And they will be finalizing their recommendation to me as to which of the schools will be closed on October 31st. I will be sending a press release and more community communication to all of you in regards to which of the schools the committee is recommending for closure and consolidation. So you'll have that information in the afternoon. Also, my executive cabinet, we've also scheduled, we're going to be visiting some of the sites on October 31st. And on November 1st, we're going to be meeting with the faculty and staff at each of the sites in person to address, you know, any concerns they have and provide any support that we can give them in regards to the schools that that will be closing. And so, so expect more information. And then on November 14th, there will be a public hearing. I do want to share that we are moving those meetings to Russo McKinney Elementary School. We're going to be using their cafeteria for the board meetings just to provide more space for our public. And so if you would like to to comment or provide the board with information on November 14th, you will be able to do so. There will also be a board information meeting on November the 21st. And then on December 2nd, at the, at that board meeting, the Board of Trustees will make their final decision in regards to which of the schools they will be approving for closure. Now again, we, we, nobody wants to close schools. We don't want to close schools. But at this point, we have to, we cannot afford to keep all our schools open, unfortunately. And so the board understands that. If we do not close schools down, and I want to, I want to share this with you because it's very important. Then if we cannot meet our obligation that we have and we are solvent for three years in our budget, the county can take over the district, which means they would assign a county administrator. That means I'm gone. No superintendent, that person will take over. The board will lose all governing authority over the district. And the county will now make all decisions, financial, anything having to do with the district and governance, policy resolutions, they will take over. And they will close schools down without input. So they will make the necessary cuts to keep this district financially solvent. And so that's what we want to avoid. We do have to submit, Teresa De Sales, the Assistant Super Business or CBO. We have to submit a budget stabilization plan. I believe it's the third week in December after the board takes action and approves the schools that will be consolidated and closed. And then we will need to submit that to the county and the CDE. Which means that we need to close schools. And we need to become financially solvent for at least three years. All these meetings, just so you know, are here in the district boardroom for the the committee meetings, but the board meetings beginning on the 14th will take place at Russo McKinney. So those board meetings will will take place there. And again, like I mentioned, the next meeting is tomorrow, so they will make their final final decision as to which of the schools they will recommend for closure. And then I will make a final decision and recommendation to the board on December 2nd regarding the schools that that will be closed. And so with that, what I want to do is I do have my team here with me. And so we'll go ahead and open it for any questions that you may have and we'll try to answer as many as we can. The other thing I want to share with you, we do have, there is a website. If you log on to www.arusd.org, you, there is a consolidation of schools link there with all the frequently asked questions that you'll be able to access. So, and there's some also some other communication and minutes from from some of our meetings and links to the recorded consolidation committee meetings that have been taking place since September last month. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it for any questions you may have. And team, jump in if you would like to answer any questions. Here we go.
You may want to mention that you'll have to unmute in order to talk.
Yeah, if you, if you would like to ask a question, you can unmute and you can ask your question, or you can also enter it in the chat, correct Brett? Do they have access to that?
Yes, they do. Thanks.
You can also enter it in the chat.
Superintendent Cerda, there is a comment in the chat. Rosalinda Alvarado, that this is not in Spanish. Can we have Carlos or Carmelina, please?
They're actually here. Carlos, there's a, they're translating in a separate room?
Yeah, they might not, this person might not know how to into the.
Can you have them connect with Carlos and or Carmelina?
Yes.
Carlos, can you assist the parent that needs it, needs this in in Spanish? Thanks. And then Delia, raise your hand. Go ahead, Delia.
Hi, so my question is, the meeting, the the last, the last of the meetings, I think is, you said December 2nd is the last one where the board actually takes an action?
Correct.
So what's the one before that's informational? How is that different?
They're not going to take action on that one. They're just going to basically have an open informational meeting regarding the school closures. So they're still going to be discussing it. And so the public can still make public comments or share any concerns that they may have. But they won't be taking action on the school closures. The final action will be in December, December 2nd.
And will that also be at McKinney Russo or at the?
That'll be at McKinney, yes. We we want to make sure we have more space in case more, more of the public would like to, or community members would like to attend.
It looks like Ramona has her hand up.
Go ahead, Ramona.
Hi, good evening. You mentioned that a lot of the schools are overstuffed right now. Is there a reason why there's a job fair November 7th if you're already overstuffed?
Yes, we still have some. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the the job we're having is for for classified employees. And yeah, and there are still openings we have in our classified positions like special ed paras, regular paras, some some bus monitors. So it's not, it's not for teachers per se. It's mostly for positions that we've not been able to fill this year.
And then Ramona, you're already. And then, and somebody had a question about transportation. We we are looking into transportation. We are having that discussion around whether we're going to be offering some type of shuttle or transportation shuttling service. And so we're still looking into that to see. We do have some buses that are 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 not working. And so we're looking at fixing them and hopefully we can, we can provide some transportation for our families and students. And Ricardo Garcia, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for taking my question. What's happening, what's happening with the teacher housing? Is that going to be placed on hold due to the fact we're having some budget issues right now?
Yeah, Mark, you want to, you want to answer that one?
Certainly, Superintendent Cerda. The, the process for the workforce housing is still moving forward as per the direction of our Board of Trustees. We're currently in the phase of the RFQ, Request for Qualifications for Design Builders. So that process is still moving forward. I would mention that that's kind of a different pot of money. So the, the pot of money is bonds funded and it, and it comes from a different source rather than the general fund. The shortfall that we're experiencing and having to deal with in school closures is is general fund dollars and so kind of a different pot, if you will.
And Ricardo Garcia, you have a question and also Delia? You can unmute.
Okay, this is Delia. Hi, so with the election coming up in November, what will the person that, because we're going to get one new board member, is that per, at least, is that person going to be part of the voting decision in December, or is that position not filled until they don't sit in until next year?
No, they, I believe the organizational meeting is December 19th. Am I correct on that team? Yeah. So they they have to swear them in on December 19th. We have to submit a fiscal stabilization plan to the county by when, Teresa? December 15th or so? And so the new or or newly elected trustees will not be, will not be making a decision as to whether schools close or not.
My last question about this, what about, so the board votes in December. The committee has been meeting all these months, weeks to to get, it's going, they're going to give the suggestion. But in the end, it's actually the board's decision and they don't have to abide by it, but it's recommended, correct?
Yeah, well, they can make, the board is going to make final decision. Well, here's, here's how it's going to work. The committee is going to make the recommendation to me of, hey, we've identified Mr. Cerda, we've identified these nine schools. I will be reviewing their recommendations and will be analyzing whether their recommendation is the appropriate, are the appropriate schools that will financially give us the savings that we need and that there are no issues with them or equity issues or barriers for our families and students. Of course, every school will be impacted, every school. Right? Because we're going to have to combine, students are going to enroll in every single school from other schools that will be closed. Once they make that recommendation to me and I analyze those recommendations, if I need to make changes, I will make changes. And then my recommendation is the one that the board will then review. And we're going to make the final decision. So they're going to make the final decision on that.
Mr. Cerda, you have two questions in the chat.
Sure. Can you read them for me?
Yeah. Is there a plan on how teachers will be moved to the new schools?
Yes, there is. And so there is a collective bargaining language that we have to follow. And so we're going to follow the teachers' union, the contract that we have when it comes to the consolidation of schools and or the closures of schools. So there's language in there that we're, we're going to follow.
Are you looking into creating K-8 schools as part of this?
We're, we're looking at everything. The committee is looking at everything. If it makes sense to to create a K-8, you know, school, then then we will do so. But I will say, and Teresa De Sales, the Assistant Super Business, if we're going to save money, it's actually less, it's it's more expensive to have K-8 schools. And we don't generate the savings that we're looking for if we go that route. And we don't generate the savings that we're looking for if we go that route.
The next question is, will this affect this school year?
This is. Well, i- it is going to affect this school because of of one, the the notifications, right, it's going to. It's going to stress a lot of people out, it's going to stress our teachers, our principals. Our district staff, our families, your students, right? And so, but but as far as like the changes will take place the following year in the year twenty five. Twenty six is when the changes will take effect because. We're gonna be notifying the families, enrolling students. In the schools that they select, because we are, you're, you are gonna have choice, right, as to which school you will be attending because we want to maximize. And ensure that you are enrolled at the school that you would like to attend. And so, but most of the, most of the changes or the changes as far as the closures. And consolidation will will take effect in August of twenty five, twenty six school year.
Okay, there are a few more, do you want me to keep reading them or do you wanna?
Why don't we alternate, because you have some hands also, and if you can call on the next one.
Ricardo Gotta C I think was next.
Ricardo, you have a question?
It's a follow up question. Are you able to give us the short list today or do we have to wait till tomorrow to find out the list?
Yeah, you have to wait, the committee has not finalized that list and I wouldn't want to overstep, it's it's their recommendation, not mine. And so I want to respect their their hard work and so you would have to wait, but but thanks for asking.
Next is Quenui.
Yes, hi, thank you for taking my question, so. For the criteria list, there's our list is some very detailed points and I know that. You guys haven't shows like, you know, the whole list of them, but or I'm just curious how important are. Like the points in general, so compared to other, for example, like, you know, the first one we're looking at is the enrollment. And then the next one is borderline to charter school. And so how are those important point, like, are they equally important? Or how the committee is gonna look, they're going through the list, you know, for example, there are ten points, so. To qualify our school for closure, let's say if a in enrollment, for example, elementary school, we want less than three hundred. Then we say, oh, if a school four hundred, then it's okay. And the next is not next to charter school is okay, but then if you go down to the, you know, other point, so what if other? What if other point that particular school not qualify, like how does the committee? Discuss or wait on that?
So so they're actually, they're actually weighing, they're not using a point system, but they are looking at. They're looking at all the criteria and they're not giving it one specific point, but they are prioritizing. Which of the criteria would make more sense? When it comes to recommending a school foreclosure, so they are breaking up into teams and they are. Making a unanimous recommendation and they are sharing concerns and they are sharing. Data, there's a lot more data that I'm not sharing criteria that I'm not sharing with you. Like, for example, there's also schools that if you keep them open in the next. You know, five, six years or ten years, you're gonna have to spend twelve or twenty million dollars to keep it open. We can't afford to be in that situation, so. They are looking at all the data, all the criteria that that they would like. And we're providing it for them and so they're just prioritizing it, they are discussing it, they're going into deep discussion around. What criteria best makes or or makes more sense? That would continue to support the the entire district, not just one school.
And another things that. Like the the point when it say next to the charter school, I think it's a valid point, but also. Another thing is. I think there is can include more is the location of the school as well.
Right, right.
Because, you know, if it's the school that, let's say if it's a border school and school that's so next to other school district, that's what we worry about. Not just about charter school, that they taking our students, but if we close and then. There, our neighbor schools, you know, other public school that nearby, they will take our student as well.
They they won't, let me tell you why, so I I'm not concerned about neighboring districts. The ones that are charter schools don't need permission from the district to take your students. That's a fact, they can just enroll your student and take them from us. If if there is a neighboring district like Franklin McKinley or Berryessa, right? If they would like to enroll a student of ours. I need to sign off or one of my assistant superintendents would have to authorize it and we're not gonna authorize that. Unless we're only going to authorize interdistrict, they're called interdistrict permits if. They are signing into a program that we're not offering. And so which is why we are looking and reevaluating all the programs that we have here. Because there's some great programs that we have in this district that and and we just haven't been communicating and informing the community, but it's a, it's a very good question that you ask and. And I'm glad you asked it. Thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm I'm just saying the reason I said it too, for example. Like a dual program, like I'm I'm not from the school district and I'm transferred to. And so a lot of my friends same thing, so let's say if we close the school. And we move, we try to move entire school, let's say more than four hundred students, we, it's risky. Because basically we we don't know if we can move the whole entire students. That they willing to go to, you know, another, another place. And let's say if it's further, then of course the parents can be like, hey. I I can't drive that far, then they would move back to their 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 school, like, you know, like my local school, so that's the way that is not. Is not just about signing paper and stuff, yes.
Yeah, it's the other way, no, you're right, you don't offer a program, that that is a very good point that you make is, yeah, they they may go back, right, because they may not. Agree with with the change, but no, we're, which is why I I do want to emphasize, we do have some great programs here, like the dual language programs that. We are definitely going to continue. It's 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 high priority because they are providing. The 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 what what students need, right, and what families need, and so we want to continue to do that. I'm gonna go.
Thank you.
Another P O, you're welcome to another question, you want to call somebody else?
Yes, special education transportation would continue for those students with transportation in their I E Ps. I'm guessing that's a question.
Yes. Correct, you are correct, they will.
Do you have a list of schools that? Elementary schools that are going to close, my child goes to curate in.
Not yet, the recommendation of those schools will be released on October thirty first, so you will get notification then. Of which of the schools will be closed.
Are you going to publish specific details on the rationale that was used to determine which schools are closed consolidated? It is important to get transparency into why some get picked over the other.
Yes, we will be, the committee is identifying criteria and. The justification as to why they're recommending it and that'll be included as well.
Okay, and then I'll go back to the screen, Ricardo Garcia again.
Superintendent, another clarification question. You mentioned that that K through fifth grade seems to be. More cost effective versus the.
No, K through eight is more expensive.
Is more expensive?
Yes.
Yeah. Is a criteria also being considered for? Successful programs like. The the dual language schools that are K through eight, is that also being considered?
Yes, it is.
I I hear a lot of, you know, obviously. Financial issues, but. You know, you have full enrollment in those schools, I believe, right?
Correct.
So that's, I just want to make sure that that's represented and considered.
It is, and the committee, and you're asking a very good question, Ricardo, because yes, they, you know, and they've been weighing this, they. They're going on their eighth meeting and and that question that you're asking is exactly what they're asking themselves. Why would we want to break up a program that's being successful and so? They they they're definitely weighing that. But if 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 we have a K eight school, we don't want to close it, right, if it's being successful, so. So those are things I'm gonna consider as well when I get the recommendation from the elementary, I mean, from the committee.
Okay, will all closures happen in twenty five, twenty six or will some be twenty five, twenty six and others twenty six, twenty seven?
So currently we are, the board has approved up to nine schools. And that's the direction that they gave me, the superintendent and the committee. And those would take effect in twenty five, twenty six, we are going to monitor, continue monitoring our enrollment. And if we continue to drop because the demographers. Projections for enrollment is that we're gonna be losing about three hundred or more students per year. Teresa, how much is three hundred students times fifteen thousand dollars?
Four point five million dollars.
So we're losing four point five million dollars every year if the demographer is correct, so we may have to close most more schools. Our goal is that we continue, we improve our programs and we. One, we need to beautify our campuses, our schools and use those bond dollars effectively. And efficiently so that we are beautifying our schools and we are also. Attracting students and continuing to improve our our student outcome, so that's the number one goal. And the other thing that we are looking at that I haven't addressed is. Teresa and I will be making a recommendation to the board to approve a contract so that. We can contract some realty advisors so that they can evaluate our property. All the assets that we have, because right now we're very. Land rich and and money poor, and so we're gonna be able to evaluate those properties. And then they can make recommendations as to what we can do to generate revenue. Right, we can exchange them for 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 other buildings that that can. Generate revenue for our district and some other districts are doing that right now and they're generating millions of dollars. That are unrestricted, that you can use to support our 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 school sites, especially our teachers and our students.
Okay, next is Amy Rodriguez.
Hi, Mr. Serta, I'm I'm one of the district nurses and so. We're hearing a lot about the educational piece, but as I've seen enrollment decline over the years. The medical needs of students has drastically increased, has there been any discussion about? The healthcare piece and will there be any changes to that or will that stay the same?
Yeah, I don't know if you know this, but we just got a twelve point three million dollar community schools grant approval. And so a lot of those funds are. Are going to address some of the mental health and 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 health needs, right, of our students and so. Right now what we're looking at is we're really looking at at the F T E, right, the reduction in in students. And and how that's affecting the number of teachers, teacher assistants, office staff, and so we need to make sure that. We are staffed correctly there, but no, there's there's a definite need in 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 mental health and as well as our health. Of our, the health needs of our students and so. I definitely, I I'm sure it's gonna come up, but right now it's, we're really focusing on the other.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Victoria Partida.
Hi, Victoria.
Hi, I had a question, if you can elaborate a little bit more, when. When you're talking about equity, like, you know, after you get the the list and you feel like you need to change it up. Can you speak a little bit more about the equity and what kind of factors are you gonna look? Because the whole east side is socially disadvantaged and, you know, economically disadvantaged, so what what factors are you gonna look into?
Right, right, well, I I I think some of the equity, you have parents that that drive their kids to school. And so distance is not an issue, right, and so. If we're closing a school, you know, are. Or is there a large number of students there and families that need to walk? And so why would we want to make them walk more than a mile, mile and a half or two miles, right? When that becomes an equity issue, other equity issues is. We don't want to, you know, send too many. Of our students who are in special education to another school and then make it a disproportionate number of students that are enrolled. In that school, we want to make sure that we are enrolling students. At a school where they can actually, that they can attend, we're not over enrolling in a particular group of students, you also have emerging multilingual students. Right, students that are in the English learner programs and so. You you don't want to create a situation, and this has happened before in districts that I worked at. Where all of a sudden you you're sending all your English learners to one school, right? That becomes a serious equity issue or you're sending all your high performing students to one school, that's an equity issue. So so those are some examples that I can give you, Victoria, I don't know if it answered your question. But those are the things that we're definitely looking at.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the chat, do do we have a definite number of how many schools are closing or is that also undetermined?
Well, right now, we we are being, the the board has approved up to nine, nine schools. And if we need to go higher, then that's a recommendation that I will have to make to the board. But right now the recommendation is nine.
And there's a comment from a parent, Rosita Delgado, saying it will affect the children's grade. Another question, how many middle and how many elementary?
Yeah, I I think right now, I don't have that for you, but the majority of the schools are elementary. That you would need to close just because we have more elementary schools than we do middle schools. And so we want to make sure that we are not putting ourselves in a situation where we're not gonna have enough middle schools, right, to to enroll our students. And then somebody, the the other question was about grade, will it affect their grade? It it's not going to affect their grade, so if they're in the fourth grade this year. They will go to another school as a fifth grader, so they are going to to promote unless. Unless there's some other issue. Sandra, I don't know if if retentions go through your department. Yes.
I think.
Go ahead.
I think that was a com- more of a comment, I don't know if it was a question, but.
Okay, yeah.
The next question is, since dual language programs are attracting students, are you looking into expanding those programs to other schools in order to increase enrollment? Are you looking to add other programs which may attract students?
You want to answer that one?
So I know that, I mean, I don't think immediately we're looking at. In increasing dual language programs, but it is something that we've talked about. Replicating at other schools and it's possibly not. Dual language school, but possibly having dual language strands of the program at different schools throughout the district. And after the closures and and once we start looking into programs and strengthening our programs. This is something we will definitely look at to see how we can offer more opportunities to students in other parts of the district.
Yeah, and I think just to add a little bit more to to that one, there's a, we've discussed this in in cabinet. We're also looking at at offering accelerated courses for our students like algebra, for example, in the eighth grade. And and offering accelerated programs that that will benefit our students and better prepare them. For high school and then and beyond, right, because we want students to to leave our school. And make it to high school so that they are successful in high school so that they can then decide whether they want to go to college or or select some type of career field, so. That that's our goal.
Okay, I hope all other successful programs in the district are also being valued.
Absolutely, we're looking at all of them. And I think Delia raised her hand, Delia, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thanks for your, I saw your, I saw your hand go up. I saw your, I saw your hand go up.
Um, so, um, you know, because I've been following this for a long time. So I know, um, they said up to six. Elementary schools and up to three junior high schools. Is that still the plan to have a total nine? Because I know there was a big push. They're saying, you know, it's obviously they can get the enrollment up, then it wouldn't be nine, it would be maybe eight or seven. Has there been an increase or decrease or about the same from students from this year to last year? Because obviously the more enrolled, the better chances of less schools closing.
Our, our, our enrollment continues to decline and so that's the, the issue. The, the magic number, Delia, is ten million. We have to. Uh, in order for, uh, for a school, just the operational costs of a school, the electricity, right? The operating, um, uh, paying for, for teacher administrator salaries. Uh, support staff, plant managers, right, uh, building and grounds workers. All of that equates to, to about a million dollars, Teresa. I just wanna, just per school. And so. Uh, some schools a little bit more than others, which is why we're aiming for. Up to nine schools, which is what was presented to the board before I got here in, uh, May or June of last year. And so that, that's the estimate. And that's what we're sharing with, with, with the county because we also have. A FICMAT, uh, which is a financial person from the state and also from the county. That are scrutinizing and looking at our budgets very closely to ensure that we are. Uh, you know, fiscally solvent and so i- i- it's up to nine schools. But if we continue to decline in enrollment, it could be ten, it could be eleven. And so we just want to make sure we, we. Save the ten million, we realize those ten million this year and then start focusing on next year. And looking at other things that we can cut. So that, so that we can, uh, get ourselves out of this hole and, and, and hopefully we can then begin to promote our programs.
Next question, if George closes, what's going to happen to the VAPA program?
So, so, uh, programs, remember, can, can go to other schools. So if George closes and they have a great VAPA program. Uh, you know, remember that the kids and the teachers follow their students so that, that program can continue at another school if George closes.
There are only five middle schools in the district, three middle schools feels excessive.
Yeah, and we're, like I said, we're, the committee's looking at everything. They're looking at the financial, um. The operational, just other criteria and so. Uh, once they make their recommendation, you'll know whether it's three schools, three middle schools or two. Uh, but I can't share that information with you yet.
Okay, I'm gonna try to translate this one on the fly here, so give, be patient with me, okay? Other than the district webpage, is there another way that we will, parents will be informed? About the school closures and which are selected. How will we organize the transfer of students, um, to different schools?
Yeah, so those are, those are great questions. Yes, you're gonna be getting a press release from, from me, uh. Indicating which of the schools will be recommended, uh, for closure. And then as far as like the transfers from school, we're gonna be working with the families with you. We're gonna be sending you communication as to which of the schools you've been enrolled in or which school you would like to be enrolled at. And, uh, we're gonna, uh, our student information system is. Uh, is, is one system and so it's, it's very easy for us to monitor. And, um, control where students go and, and provide you with that information as, as we move closer to those dates.
And then I'm gonna call Marielena Reese.
Hi, I'm a teacher here in the district. So what is the plan for Monday to help our students? Our students will have lost an identity. I'm a middle school teacher. We lost our band room a couple of years ago when a charter came on campus and I could tell you my students were devastated.
Yeah.
They, they found out, they were crying. I, I had the band group. When they couldn't even come to my room, they couldn't even come inside. They were so sad because they lost a room. So are we gonna have extra counselors? Because I can tell you as in middle school, little ones might not feel the same way.
Right.
Their pride. We just won, you know, cross country and they were so proud to call themselves. You know, the Cougars or some, they're gonna be grieving. How are we gonna support our kids through that process? And then you're saying teachers, we're supposed to do it, but honestly, we too will be grieving, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
Too, so how are, what is the plan to support our students first of all? And our parents because. What's gonna happen Monday?
Yeah, so, um, let me just back up a little bit. Um, yes, we are going to, to deploy. If I have to be at a site, I'll be at a site, but we'll deploy our, our staff from the D O. Uh, as well as, uh, additional, uh, counselors, um, for our students. Um, but we, uh, we're gonna start with our teachers, right? Because on, uh, October thirtieth, the committee will be making their recommendation, uh, to me. And, uh, I'm actually meeting with the principals at nine P M on October thirtieth. If, um, the committee usually finishes by like eight thirty, if they don't. Then I'll move the meeting up, but I will be meeting with the principals on, um. Uh, tomorrow evening, uh, to discuss next steps. Uh, I will be deploying my staff on the following day. We are gonna be meeting with faculty and staff. At, at the sites, uh, in pairs of two. Uh, Sandra, Teresa, Mark, Sesar and Brad. All of us will be, uh, going out in pairs and, and meeting with faculty and staff at each of the sites. On October the thirty first and also on November the first. Uh, Sesar, we also have the employee assistance, right? Uh, that, that, um. You wanna talk a little bit about?
Well, I mean, that, that's available through our insurance plan, the employee assistance program as well.
But, but yeah, you're asking some very good questions, um, that we're definitely thinking about and, and, uh. We definitely want to be out there and providing that support. And I will be holding more town hall meetings, uh, so that I can meet with, with parents. Uh, we're also gonna call, um, uh, additional meetings via Zoom for our certificated. And also our classified, right? Because there's a different process that needs to be followed for, for. Uh, each of those groups and so we want to make sure we're there for all of them as well.
Um, can I? It's going to be a process, a, a longer process than, than one day, you know? It's gonna be probably until the end of the school year, there are gonna be different. Challenges that we're going to face in ways that we need to support, um, everyone, staff, students, parents. Um, with the loss, um. And even those schools that remain open are also going to change. Um, so there, there's gonna be a lot of processing that needs to take place and our S C L department is already. Um, planning on support resources for, um, for our schools. Um, but we will also need to, um, take it one step at a time. So it's not just gonna be about Monday, it's gonna be about, you know, the days after that as well and it'll be, um, a process. I do, I did wanna let you know also that we did arrange to have, um. Uh, couns- additional counseling services for staff, um, Thursday and Friday. Uh, it'll be virtual, that's the only way we can maximize the number of counselors that we have. Um, but you can check with your, um, principal to see how to, um. Make a, an appointment for, um, one of those, um, counselor slots if interested. Okay, um. With recommendations being made on October thirtieth, followed by a potential reversal on December second. Board meeting, effective communication with schools and parents is crucial.
Agreed.
A clear and timely communication strategy is needed to address potential confusion and concerns. This should include regular updates, transparent explanations of the decision-making process. And proactive outreach to alleviate any anxiety or uncertainty. Have you, has this been considered?
Uh, yes, and, and I, I mentioned it earlier when I first started the, the meeting, uh, this afternoon. Uh, we've actually hired a, uh, communications, a chief of communications and community engagement, uh, staff member. Uh, that will be assisting us with ensuring that we have clear, transparent. Uh, communication that is consistent and is being sent out to all our families and all our, uh, stakeholders. So thank you for, for bringing that up.
Okay, most teachers already seem disconnected to their students' education. These changes might add to their stress. How will they be held accountable? Or given support to enhance their teaching, moreover, not lack in performing at their best as a teacher?
Well, as you've heard, you know, everybody's, uh, is going through, you know, everybody's gonna grieve, right? And so we need to, uh, make sure that we're providing that support, uh, to our sites. I think more than ever, uh, this year, uh, my team and I and Sandra and I are the ones that actually work closely with the principals. Uh, we will continue to, you know, conduct our, our site visits, check in with the principals as well because the principals are gonna be grieving too. We're also gonna have to reduce and force up to nine principals and so. Uh, one, everybody's still collecting a paycheck, right? Uh, and they're all professionals, we're all professionals. Um, if that's happening, I, I think it's, it's important that you communicate with your principal. That there are some concerns regarding a particular teacher. Um, but, but there's still an evaluation process that needs to be followed. There's still, uh, professional duties and responsibilities that teachers and all staff members are held to and so. Uh, we, we wanna hold ourselves and, and everyone to that, so thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, um, what will happen if Sylvia Casell San Juan Baptista closes? We don't have these programs in other schools.
What if, can you repeat that again? What if?
Sylvia Casell San Juan Baptista, that's the, um, the preschool program that is at the site.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if they close, then programs, um. You know, can go to another school and continue, uh, will provide the, the rooms and the space for them and so. Uh, that, that, that will be taken care of.
Uh, will you do town halls at every school because each one has different necessities?
I, I don't have the, I, I'm trying to, to be strategic in, in, uh, where I meet, right? Because there's twenty-two schools and so I will try to spread them out and to make sure that, that. Uh, that's why we did the Zoom one, just because more people can log on to it and so. What I'm hearing from the community, because I held one at Russo last, uh, week. And we must have had about thirty-five, forty parents or community members. And so today I think we're breaking over a hundred and so I think it, it reached out. Uh, more people, um, were able to join in today, so. We'll try to do both Zoom and in person to spread it out.
And that's the last question I have here.
Is it, team, is there anything you would want to add that I missed before we, uh, say good night?
I see one more question in the chat that came up and I'll just translate quickly.
Sure.
The statement is, m- my son doesn't belong to the Alamoak School District, what's gonna happen?
Yeah, if they don't belong to Alamoak, you are more than welcome to continue with us. Uh, we will be renewing the inter-district permits, so just continue to, to, to follow. Uh, Sandra, I believe you do it every year, right? For the inter-district, um, permits. You have to renew every year, so just make sure you renew it. So you can continue with us.
Another question. Can we attend a town hall at another school or will it be that school specific?
No, 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 the, the town halls are open to anyone that would like to attend it, so if there's another one, please feel free to attend.
What will happen to the employees? Will they be moved to other schools?
Uh, yes, if, if, um, remember that the teachers and staff follow their students and so. Uh, we do have to follow the, the contract language because there is specific contract language to. Uh, consolidation and closures of schools, so we want to make sure we follow that so that we're not in violation of the contracts, so yes.
And it looks like Ricardo has another question.
Uh, go ahead, Ricardo.
Just to finish up, a couple of things on, on, on mental health, especially I have two sixth graders in the district.
Okay.
So they, they would potentially be impacted quite a bit.
Right.
So I really wanna emphasize and, and just implore you to, to really consider. The innocence that these kids are gonna lose, you know, being moved.
Absolutely.
You know, because I mean, we, we've been in the district, I was, I was a student in the district, you know? Forty plus years ago.
Yes.
So, that's important and then, uh, what's, I also, um, what's hap- what's gonna happen with the properties? Um, I hope that these aren't gonna be sold. I know we have a, you know, a. A decline now, but.
Yes.
Essentially, you know, we could, we could have a rebound and have more kids.
Correct. No, that's a, that's a very good question and yes, mental health, uh, we definitely need to continue to invest in that to. Uh, continue to support the transition, uh, for all, right? You've heard one of our teachers, uh. Mentioned it earlier and everyone's going to be impacted, right? Everyone, um, but yes. Uh, I shared this with the committee, uh, earlier and this is a. This was research from like, I don't know, fifteen years ago and it still, uh, resonates with me that. You know, it takes an adult about a year to adjust, it's just a moving from one apartment to another or one city to another. At least a year to adapt, right? To, to get used to it. And, uh, we're gonna have first graders, second graders, third graders and of course your sixth grade students. It takes him longer to adjust to this change and so we, we need to be very sensitive to that. And, uh, we definitely need to look at the, the supports. Uh, the mental health supports that we can provide for them, so, so definitely. And as for the, your question around the properties. We're gonna be contracting, um, I'm gonna be recommending, uh, a contract, uh, to the board. In one of the future meetings, uh, so that we can contract with some realty advisors. So that they can evaluate, uh, assess our properties and also make recommendations around. Uh, what we can do with it because once you sell your property, then you're done. It's like, okay, and then what happens to that money, right? So what we wanna do is we want to, um, utilize these properties in, in a smart way where. We, we can lease it, we can maybe swap it for, for other revenue. Uh, generating, uh, buildings, right? Uh, so that we're bringing funds into this district and we're also preparing for future. Yeah, what if there is a rebound, right? Uh, we can always cancel a, uh, a lease, right? And so we can get our property back. And in my previous district, uh, Campbell Union High School District, that. Ricardo is exactly what happened. They ended up closing Branham High School and they had to reopen it. Because there was an influx of, you know, of, of, of students that were enrolling in the district. And now it's actually one of the largest high schools in that district at, at over two thousand. So we definitely have to be ready for that. So thanks for bringing that, asking that question.
Um, Eddie has his hand up.
Go ahead, Eddie.
Um, good, good afternoon, good evening. Currently we have approximately, uh, thirty-five, uh, kindergarten classrooms, kinder- classrooms. In order to prevent a self fulfilling prophecy of, we gotta close more schools. You have to ensure that you have at least thirty classrooms in the new model and at least fifteen. Uh, fifteen to eighteen TKs. Has this, um, analysis been shared with the committee so that in their recommendations, you don't? Restrict yourself because it turns out that what was recommended will put you in a worse position because now you don't have enough classrooms. Uh, TK classrooms.
Correct. And, and we are looking at, I, I had mentioned earlier, some of the criteria that we were looking at, Eddie, is the operational capacity. Of each of the schools and so.
Yeah, but the focus, see, people focus too much on the big number. When you, when, when the really, the, the, the focus needs to be in your input. Input is your kindergarten class.
Right.
If you don't have enough kindergarten classes, you're gonna lose, um, you're gonna lose the students to your competition. And so the, 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 I'm not sure if that instruction was, you know, guidance was given to the committee. But today you have thirty-five classrooms. If in their decisions, you end up with less than, um, thirty-five classrooms, thirty classrooms. Then it's gonna be a fulfilling prophecy because your, your graduating class is approximately eight hundred. Eighth graders. And so, and so you need to be, uh, enrolling six hundred and fifty to seven hundred. And so and so you need to be at uh enrolling six hundred and fifty to seven hundred students per year. If not, you will be in the situation where you're gonna have to close another two schools in three years.
Right. And so uh we we did share the the demographers report. We're actually projected to lose over three hundred students, three hundred plus per year.
Yep.
And so, yep. And so, yeah, we're we're definitely looking at that. We did share that information with the committee and they are looking at it.
Yeah, but the 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 demographic's report has some significant errors at the school level.
Yeah, no.
Can I add, can I add that any classroom can be used for a kindergarten class? It does not necessarily have to be a kindergarten classroom. Any class can be used.
That that's good to hear because the district before had indicated it had to meet some type of requirement, uh bathroom pods, bathrooms. And so this is what the district told parents before.
Yeah, so yeah, we're we're engaging in those conversations in in the, well, the committee is. And so they they are looking at that. So thank you for bringing it up. And I think a couple more.
Mona?
Ramona, go ahead.
Is there a possibility that the county will wanna buy the land and turn that into charter schools?
We're not gonna sell it to the county. That's those are our assets. That's our property.
Okay, a a couple of people are interested in the recording. Will it be?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll add this to the uh to the website link, so you'll have access to it. Thanks for asking.
And a couple more comments in the chat. I'm afraid of the old students and we'll start fighting or bullying the new students.
Yeah, and that's something we're gonna work with the sites on to address those issues. So thank you for for bringing that up.
Um and I think that's it. Someone said, there's always the Moxa Center.
Yeah, there's there's a Moxa too, so we're looking at that one as well. So thank you. All right, everyone. Well, thank you so much. Uh we're gonna be holding some additional town hall meetings. Uh I appreciate it. Thank you for joining us and uh have a good night. Thank you.